Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call please.
Poland.
Here.
Hofstadter.
Here.
Shoemaker.
Here.
Khan.
Here.
Hafi.
Here.
Vaughn.
Thank you. May we have motion excuse ball from tonight's meeting?
Second.
Poland. Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Hi. Thank you. Good evening. Welcome. I understand we have a couple visitors at West Dress Council this evening.
You want me to talk now?
Yes, if you could just step up to the mic and state your name, please.
My name is Debbie Klein and I'm with Holmes County Historical Society. And I came in tonight to thank you to allow us to have a cemetery walk this September. And I thought, well, maybe she knows it, but we really haven't planned a lot yet because there's no sense in doing that. We don't get permission. So I've just made some notes of what I have going on ahead. So I'm all, um, we'd like to do it in September. You know, I'll still light out until eight o'clock or seven thirty or so, and we would probably start around five thirty. Now, one of my big concerns was all the cars coming into the cemetery. So Mark and I have talked and we're going to see if we can't get a bus or something to have the people park over at Deer Park, and then we'll transport them down in the bus. Because that, you know, that's gonna be a badass if you have all those cars pulling into the cemetery and not one getting in the yard and all that, so. We'll start at the mound with a little bit of the history of the cemetery and directions of what we're going to do and what my plans are. We're going to have characters. We're gonna pick out certain graves and we're going to have characters that are going to tell the story of that person. So we'll break into groups. And then I will have two, two guides with each group, one in the front and one in the back to bring up the, the rear. I'm not sure how many we'll do. I'm gonna say maybe twelve, because the only plan on being there may be an hour and a half before it starts getting, you know, dusted and darked out. Let me see what else is up. And then when we're done, we'll take the people back on the bus and back over to the parking lot. That's where we stand right now. I'm trying to make it simple and not cluttered, so. But we're, we're a good group, so. You know, we value our things around here. Any questions?
I think it sounds wonderful.
Yeah, sounds like a great event.
Yeah.
Thank you. Candy Barnard, I'm sure he's, I mean, her, her and, um, Beth Lovin have been working like a year on researching the people buried at the cemetery. So I'm gonna get with her and I want, I don't wanna just do like this as Senator, this as Congressman. I wanna throw some different things in, you know, find some interesting stories about ordinary people that are buried there. So I'm gonna be with her and we're gonna pick out who we want to do and then I'm gonna see, if they want to be a character.
I do.
Do you? Write your name down.
I have Civil War clothes, too.
Perfect. You know, I just feel a little, you have to give a little bit on their history and.
Yeah, I would love to do that.
Yeah, and I know like up there in the one corner, there's some plots that were deeded to the children's home. And there's only, I think only a couple of children that are buried there, but I would like to point that out to the people because I don't think that they know that the children's home had plots in the cemetery. And another area I'd like to point out is when they, they moved the bodies from the cemetery up here across from the Victorian house. They, they have this cemetery up there and the grave started sloping off. So they took them out. And they, they have an area up there in the one corner where they reburied those people. But just, just some different things like that that I think will be educational but fun. Uh, write your name down. I'll get it.
Okay.
Your number two.
Deal.
Okay.
Deal. I'll make a motion to approve that.
Hafi.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Poland.
Hmm.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Look forward to that. Thank you, yeah.
I'll give her the right hand number now.
Absolutely.
Well, then you've got the bodies.
Yeah.
Life ones.
Life for now.
Do we have any other visitors at West Dress Council?
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
I'm sorry, that's just me.
Oh, add my name, too.
Look, you just cut three volunteers!
But I'm trying to think of, you know, you could either be help with a guiding or do you love to play a character? I'd love to have that. I'll have you a little spiel wrote out for you and then you just have to stand at a grave with your microphone and.
And say it. That's great.
My great grandfather is buried up there and he was a prisoner in the Civil War in a rebel.
I have a nephew. I want to get still Revolution War because I have a nephew that does the reenactments. I'm doing John McFarlane.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think I can get him to do it if there's not something going on that weekend. Because I definitely want to put my nose in, yeah.
Yeah.
I think it'll be fun and it'll be educational and. Well, thank everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming in.
I've enjoyed visiting, but I'm gonna leave.
All right, may we have motion to spend the reading of minutes? Second.
Poland.
Aye.
Vaughn.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Any additions or corrections? Do you have motion pass?
Make a motion to pass, Khan.
Second.
Khan.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Poland. Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye.
Thank you. Bill Revolution, two thousand twenty-three, day seventeen. Are there any questions on the bills this evening? May we have motion to pay the bills?
Make a motion, Khan.
I'll second that one.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
Poland. Hofstadter.
Aye.
Shoemaker.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye.
Thank you. Chief.
Sir, I just wanted to bring some recommendations, uh, some of my officers on, uh, fires that had a last year. The May twenty-sixth fire, uh, first officer on scene was Dustin Battisher. He's my newest patrol officer. Uh, he arrived on scene and the resident was in front of the house. Um, resident had some breathing issues, couldn't make it out past. Dustin pretty much had to pick him up and carry him away from the fire. He got himself out of the apartment, but he was hiding behind trash cans and down from the fire a little bit, but he was twenty feet. Um, Dustin didn't do any hesitation, anything as soon as he seen him went and gone. The other two officers, when they arrived, Billy Cox and Chris Jones are also two new officers. Um, Chris Jones is the one that's in the academy, graduated from the academy. They helped check the rest of the building, uh, and then Chris ended up helping the resident. Chris having his combat medic experience from the military, um, could see that kick in. Uh, he helped get his mask on. Uh, the, the resident had a, I don't know what they're called, the oxygen tube. And he wanted to use that and Chris told him he couldn't use it. You could see the, the hose, the end of the hose was, was melted, so. Chris got, when the fire guys dropped off the bottle, an oxygen model with a mask, Chris started getting that going until the squad arrived. Helped them, you know, getting loaded up in the car, getting going. When I got on scene, Chris was carrying Scott Peck bottles. Dustin Battisher, when he was removing the, the resident from the building, his body camera actually falling off in the yard. Chris was looking for that and I had to tell Chris we'll find the camera later. Like it was just, I, I could see the experience that he's had, um, being employed, um, came through. So I just wanna recognize those guys. Also, on the June fourth fire, uh, it was a Sunday, Sunday morning fire. Patrolman Stephanie Jeanette was working by herself. I had several phone calls with her. She denied meaning to come in. I was able to hear what was going on and had my computer hooked up so I could see what was going on. She did an excellent job with that. And then on Monday afternoon, when it re-kimble, um, she called me. Caleb Cox was coming in, the two of them handled the traffic situation the best she can, as everybody knows, in the afternoon. The street's kind of a disaster, so traffic was a disaster, but all of those officers stepped up when they needed to, dealt with what they needed to do. Anything the fire department needed, we, you know, we were on hand to give them a hand. So I just wanted to bring some recognition to them, what you guys know. Because this stuff, you know, obviously is going on. You guys don't know all about it, so. I just think it's pretty neat that the first fire, the first three officers there were our, our most junior officers. And Chris not even, not even being through the academy at that time. He had graduated, but he still hadn't taken the test, so. On the subject, Chris Jones graduated the academy. Uh, he took his test today. He got the, I guess unofficial results that he has passed. I'll be waiting for him to get his letter from Obama at that time, maybe him swan in, um, get him moving on, transferring from the, from being the dispatch hire to get him into patrol. So that's, that's some good news for us. The other thing that I have is we have an applicant in patrol and an applicant in dispatch. And with us meeting once a month, I don't have either of them completed yet, but I'm hoping to have at least the patrol officer, Hunter Derrick, completed before the next council meeting. And I'd like to get permission, um, to move forward with his hiring. I don't wanna have to wait if I don't want to. I'd like to ball rolling, get him up here. He's currently employed full-time at Danville, so I'm stealing, stealing one from Danville, um, part of the chief down there several times. And he's like a lot of other places in like how we work and compete with money. So he's hoping to springboard off of me stealing one of his people to get his wages up. But he cannot say good enough things about Hunter. Hunter had actually applied with us the spring of last year when he was still in the academy and at that time I didn't consider, I need somebody now. I didn't need, you know, wait for somebody to get done the academy, so. But he's always kept the city here and everything seems to be done. We have a couple of things done. Probably have him finish something the next week. But I'd like to get council permission to move forward with that instead of waiting for the, uh, next council meeting in July. With that being said, we also have a applicant in dispatch who is just getting started in the process. His first interview is gonna be later this week. My hope is, is if he works out, to be able to get him going as soon as possible, so I'd like to be able to have permission to proceed with hiring him if that transpires before the next council meeting. And that is where I'm in. That's all I have for.
I'll make, I'll make the motion. Go ahead.
I'll second.
Are you gonna do a public recommendation with these officers? I think we should.
Like a commendation or something? I mean.
The, the initial reports that I had, I was going to, um, because I was initially told he had gotten out of the fire. Not, not saying what he did wasn't, wasn't good. Um, and I mean, it's, it's great. It's awesome. He's can't say enough about him. So, um, I was just waiting for everything to get squared away with that and I wanted to bring it to you guys and then we'll and move forward with that.
That's something you see on TV all the time, you know?
I, you know, the, the body camera survived the fire. It got, got a little bit, but it's still actually after, when, when they found, when the fire department found it, they brought it to us. And obviously it was wet. You could tell that there was moisture inside, so we let it set for three or four days before we even tried to put it together. But it still is operational. It doesn't quite fit perfectly in the charging unit, so I'll be contacting them when we get it, get it replaced, but. Yeah, I'd like to do something for them. Like, you know, I just think it's, it's awesome that our three new officers were, and, you know, what's happened on Sunday. By herself and then Monday they're dealing with that. That's, that's all good stuff, so.
Yeah. They need to see how much we appreciate when they do great things.
So Chief, is, is there a, a void yet in dispatch? If you were to hire another dispatcher, does that?
I, I'd be full staffed in dispatch.
Okay.
If I hired, that's half thing. And then, um, Hunter, the patrol officer, would put us at seven, which I've only had seven patrol officers for six months since I became chief. So that's essentially full and then I can look at my plus one that I wanted to have to be able to move Jeff into more of an administrative, back into his detective position also. But essentially the staffing for the patrol would be four and two.
That's great.
We have a motion in a second. Can you call a roll, please?
Can I, um, who was the second? I'm sorry. Shoemaker.
Aye.
Hofstadter.
Aye.
Poland.
Aye.
Khan.
Aye.
Hafi.
Aye.
And Vaughn.
Aye. Thank you. Chief, that's the longest report you've had in a long time. And it's all good news.
It is all good news.
Mr. Troy.
All right. Planning and zoning commission met last week and recommended approval of a rezoning at one thirty-eight North Matt Anthony. That's a home that'll be torn down through the demolition grant. And then the applicant has requested to put a duplex in. So in that process, we need to set a public hearing date. The earliest, that has to be at least thirty days out. Uh, so August fourteenth is the earliest date we could do that.
I would like to suggest that we have it a little earlier than six forty-five. It might be a long meeting.
Yeah, there was, there was a lot of Congress, or, yeah, a lot of zoning meeting. So, yeah, we could, we can go earlier if you'd like.
I, what did, I assume you've talked to the neighbor since then?
I've talked to the neighbor, yeah, and she, she's leery that he's gonna follow through, but she says if he does, then she's, she's happy about that, but she's leery that he's gonna.
It, it doesn't have to be August fourteenth either. It just has to be thirty days after we get it advertised, which, I mean, middle of this week sometime, we should get it advertised, so thirty days out from there. That's just the next council meeting date.
Six thirty?
Six thirty.
On the fourteenth. Okay. Uh, the designer review board or group that's working on the changes, the revisions is meeting June nineteenth with Bob Hines go over the proposed changes. I'm sure you've all seen the ODOT project, the sidewalk project's moving along really well. I, hopefully the rain. I'm glad to have the rain. We need rain desperately, but it'd be nice to wrap up the sidewalk and then rain for two weeks solid. But they, they should be fine. I do actually have an update on our storm sewer project. It looks like tentatively our pre-construction meeting will be next Monday. So that's good. We, we've got a contractor that's ready to get moving. Just took quite a while to get all the county's documents back, so. Got all that back today and we're working on setting up that pre-construction meeting. Martin Construction moved in. The house is up on two forty-one. Uh, they should be starting in the middle of this week on the demos on those. Just waiting on the gas services to be disconnected, physically disconnected, and then they'll start bringing those down. Nothing really on the Appalachian Community Grant or the resurfacing. I just threw this in, just as an update, the offset signals we talked about before. Just so you didn't think it got dropped. It's gonna be quite a while till they get installed. There's a twelve to sixteen week lead time on equipment right now, so. You know, we're likely looking at October, I'm guessing.
Hey, we just waited a year for a dump truck, so we're.
Yeah.
We're used to it.
Exactly. Uh, the Kimball contract update. So after our last meeting, were you okay piggybacking off of Sugar Creek? Sugar Creek met and they could not pass the ordinance to allow us to piggyback only because they didn't have enough council members present to pass it. So their next meeting is June twenty-sixth. Assuming they pass it, which we assume they're going to, they don't have any opposition to us utilizing it. We have two options. Since ours ends June thirtieth. We could meet between June twenty-sixth and June thirtieth to pass our legislation. Or we can wait till our July ten meeting, assuming you're not gonna be here, are you?
No.
July ten. Oh, you'll be back then, okay. Does, is everybody gonna be here if we could pass it July ten? As an emergency? And if, if you choose that option, Kimball has stated that they'll work with us starting July one till we get it passed. They'll honor that contract price. The intent of everybody is to make this, you know, everybody's in agreement, this is the option we want. It's just the, since they didn't have their enough people to pass an emergency ordinance, it kind of really closed.
Yeah.
So are you okay with waiting till July ten, so?
As long as it doesn't interrupt service.
Yeah.
Does one of us need to go to Sugar Creek for their meeting or do we feel like that's comparable? Yes.
They said it was strictly because they didn't have enough council members. There was no, no issues with, we've used them before.
Yeah.
Uh, several years back, actually, so. Yeah, there was no, no problem there.
Republic Waste Designs out there?
Not for long. Airport Park. So at the last meeting, we talked about the ODNR Nature Works application. I did not submit it because the estimate came in at ninety thousand dollars. I was anticipating thirty, thirty-five. I did not feel comfortable. The deadline was June one, of course. I did not feel comfortable submitting an application, leaving us on the hook for seventy-some thousand without you guys knowing about it. I talked to Brad about it that day when we got the estimate in, just 'cause he'd been working with me on that trail application. I, I just, it really caused some indigestion, to be honest with you. It was way more than I anticipated. And then we had a good discussion, Brad and I had a good discussion about that park. We've had, we have three or four different projects that we keep chasing around. And maybe this was a good wake-up call that, let's pull back, come up with a plan and attack it in a reasonable manner instead of trying to throw darts at a wall, if that makes sense. But I feel like we've been chasing and not really having a defined plan of attack here, so. That's where I'm at with it. I don't know, does the park committee want to get together? I think that's the logical way to do it.
Kelly, Tom, Brad, Brent is the new park committee.
We've talked about the trail. We've talked about the parking lot. We've talked about the playground equipment. We've talked about pickleball, additional pickleball courts.
The walkway, which you had applied for this last time.
The, the buildings themselves, I think if we're gonna come up with like a master plan for the park, we need to think about what we want to do there. If there's improvements that need to be made or upgrades. And the other thing we need to really consider in all of this, and I don't say this in any derogatory way, but that park gets a lot more vandalism than all the other parks put together. So we need to go about it in a way that we're trying to minimize that as much as possible if we're gonna spend the kind of money we're talking about down there. I think if we put the money into the park, it could be, I'm being optimistic, maybe people will be more apt to take care of it. But we've, we've all seen, I'm sure, some of the stuff that goes on down there and it's, it's not good. I think some consideration for, for that need to be discussed as well.
I was, I was approached during the, uh, rhythm cutting at the amphitheater over the weekend about more pickleball courts.
I got hit up at the trail auction for the same thing for three times.
I honestly think we could put twelve in and then still one more.
I'm glad it's such a popular thing.
Oh, I never dreamt.
I don't know, is any form leagues formed here? I know they have them in Loudenville and Woodstock.
Uh, Jen Paulerson just called me today and asked me if, if we, if I would be offended if the trail or the park district would be a contact point for a pickleball league utilizing our facility, and I said, have fun.
Yeah.
That's fine.
Yeah.
I, I think the park is, has been utilized more than it has been for a number of years. So, and I think if, if the park committee gets together, meets and, and tries to categorize the, the different projects that, that are needed down there, come up with a game plan, um, you know, it, it, it's like, you know, you said, we need to reset and do it, do it right and let people know that, um, we're hearing them and we wanna do what the community would like to see happen down there. It may take a little bit longer than what we would have liked to, to see, but I think the end result is gonna be worth it, so.
Well, let's plan it then.
One, do you wanna?
Can we do it down there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, we could do it down there.
Do it down there.
I've got one suggestion. Paint the fence, the backdrop or backstop. Looks pretty cruddy.
Okay, it's a good suggestion.
That's a suggestion.
That's a good suggestion. Does it matter?
I'm calling at the end of the month after, next Wednesday.
Your leave on Wednesday? Do you do Tuesday? Which one? Is that too much?
We're leaving mid-morning on Wednesday.
Okay.
You wanna do it Monday night, Dave?
No, I don't wanna do it on that day.
I was gonna say, Kelly would be at work.
Yeah, that's true. That's true. We're only the only one.
It's the week of the third.
The fifth? No?
Could be.
Oh, planning is, oh, yeah, yeah, that's true.
I don't know that there will be, but could be.
You want to do it the third? Not one day?
No.
Thursday the sixth?
Thursday the sixth, in that weekend. Yeah. Thursday the sixth?
I'm going.
Brett, the sixth works you? What about you, Tom?
Or, I mean, if you want to do it later this week, I mean, I could do that, but. If you want to wait till July.
We're gonna advertise too. Yeah, we're gonna advertise, so.
That's right, yeah.
The sixth.
July sixth.
July sixth.
Five thirty?
Five thirty.
At work.
Brett, is that good for you?
It works for me, yeah.
Is that good for you?
At the park.
Where's Wendy, Matt?
Wyndham?
Yeah.
Never heard of that one. Is that a hotel?
That is. Wendy's Awards. You got that?
I should be.
Okay. July sixth at five thirty.
Six would be safe.
Can you tell Pat, please? Thank you. Six? Okay, six o'clock for Tom. I'm gonna be back, sorry. It's okay. Brett, is that good?
Yep.
Six.
Well, if, I mean, we'd have some time, too, if, if. We wouldn't stick with the six.
We wanna get rock and roll, yeah. Keep in mind, though, for Bobby's sake for minutes, try to keep in a group so she can hear everybody and hear conversations. Okay, that's good. When you're out. Yeah, walking around. Hey, Bobby! I can bring my pickleball, too, if you guys wanna do a quick match. Yeah.
That's a great idea, but the courts will probably be in use.
We'll have to wait in line. It probably will.
Okay. Bobby?
All right. So everyone has signed the acknowledgement for the May financials and now you have May financials. Um, also mailed out, uh, the budget document. Also mailed out the budget document, documents and also the summary that we can go over here, so. Everybody knows it's a stab in the dark. It's all estimates at this point. We did the best we could going with the items that the departments turned in to us. Then trying to come up with a year-end cash balance this year and year-end next year. That's what the summary is. So I guess at this point, does anybody have any questions? At least as far as the larger items that was turned in by departments. I'm not sure I understand what some of that is, but Nate probably would. I'm not, I don't operate a silver plant or a water plant. But if there's any questions, we'll try, as far as the numbers, we'll try to answer that. But if you have questions on the individual items, probably address them again. Of course, as always, we'll fine tune it when we do appropriate things towards the end of the year.
I'm assuming the items that were marked out were, they were prioritized by the departments and.
When they turned to them, they were listed in order, so those were the last of those.
I gave an action change between now and.
Really, this is just to turn into the county something, so it really doesn't mean anything, but.
I mean, it, it gives you an idea kind of where we're at, where we're going to hope to be, but nobody has a crystal ball.
And I always feel kind of bad that you guys put so much work into that and then we just kind of, yeah, it's.
Yeah, good job.
She's November.
Yeah, seeing you in November.
Yeah.
Especially right after tax season.
If I brought that out, I don't know if you remember. Do you remember, we, just so you know, we did estimate like for health insurance. We won't know that until probably October, November. I think we did ten percent for health insurance. Four percent, I think, for dental. And then one for life. And then we did four percent as far as employee wages across the board, not knowing what, what you guys want to do come October, November. So that's the numbers we used to get numbers figured in there, so.
That's good. We've been very fortunate the last few years with the medical healthcare.
That's the big one.
Yeah, that is the big one.
So we figured ten, so hopefully we stay under that.
Yeah, let's hope.
As long as they allow us to keep rolling that, that whole plan forward.
Haven't heard that they're not going to. But still, I mean, they told us that, what, how many years ago?
Yeah.
It was the last year, last year.
Yeah, every year it was the last year.
We're still grandmothered right now, so.
Okay, so. So we need to set a budget hearing, which will be prior to our next meeting, which is, the agenda says the twelfth, but it's actually the tenth of July. And we can do that at six fifty, if that works for everybody.
Sounds good.
Six fifty for the next meeting.
All right, and the last item is, since we're meeting once a month for June, July and August. We still want to be able to pay the bills every, on our regular schedule that we typically do now, so about every other week. Just so that we don't end up behind on paying some of those bills. So we just need to, to make sure that we get approval to do that.
You need a motion for that? I'm like, make a motion to pay the bills as needed.
I'll, I'll second.
Hafi?
Aye.
Schumaker?
Aye.
Holan?
Aye.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Con? And Von?
Aye.
And I told Bobby we keep separate lists for you too, so you can see what was paid one day, so.
Yeah, that's great.
Thank you. All right, Karen, you got anything?
I don't, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to legislation. First read of emergency ordinance. Two thousand twenty-three dash one to two by title only. The ordinance updating the ordinance regulating the use of Holmes County Trail to declare emergency. Are there any questions?
I have one thing to add. Porta Johns is misspelled. Porta Johns has an H, like the name John, not like J O N. Sorry. I'm an English nerd.
If there's no questions on legislation, do we have a motion to suspend the second, third readings?
So moved.
Second. Hostetter?
Aye.
Hafi? Aye, sorry. Holan? Schumaker?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Von?
You have motion to pass.
Second. Holan?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Schumaker?
Aye.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
And Von?
Any committee reports? Old business.
I just want to bring up a comment about the no turn on red at Monroe and Jackson Street. I do cut down that way to get off of Clay Street. I'll go down, you know, Pass Lutheran Church to get on Monroe or Adams. And if I'm the person at the light, I'm usually going north on Monroe or making a left-hand turn on Jackson. So anybody behind me wants to make a right-hand turn, they're still going to cut through the parking lot of the extension building.
I think they'll have a little bit hard time when they plant their trees. I assume that's what they're doing there.
But I mean, I saw one in the bargain center, that was the biggest issue, cutting through that parking lot.
But they're getting rid of that, that one exit, right?
Yeah, they're closing that all.
The Jackson Street exit.
Yeah.
So FYI.
I, yeah, I mean, I agree if the first person isn't turning right, everybody's waiting.
Yeah, I mean, they could take that alley right there.
They could, yep.
Any other old business?
Just acknowledging the letter that I had made copies of and I distributed it among people here today. I believe the media received that as well. It was a letter from Pamela Maxvialanco. She's the law librarian for Holmes County. Her office is in the courthouse. She is the coordinator for the volunteer guardianship program. She just wanted to thank the village for the support of the proposed indigent burial site at Oakville Cemetery.
As everyone's aware, the dedication of amphitheater was Saturday. I think it was well attended. The one question that was brought up was the scheduling of the facility. How's that going to be handled through?
Through Mary.
Okay.
Just like the ball field.
Jeff, when I mentioned to you, I don't know how you feel or if you say anything to Nate, the gravel's on the steps. Somebody's going to roll through it and go down.
Yeah, after you mentioned, I meant to go back down with a broom and I, I didn't make it down. But yeah, you know, we, we, that's something else that needs to be determined is how to treat that, those tears. Whether we're going to auto official turf, leave it as gravel or whatever, just something else to, to think about for the future.
It sure is nice, I must admit it.
Incorporate that into your park committee.
Yeah, exactly.
What, obviously, when they were ten on Saturday, but what were people doing? Did they bring chairs or blankets or what?
There were several people brought chairs, like we just sat on the wall.
Yeah.
A lot of people, when I was there, five thirty, were sitting on the wall, just sitting to the wall. Either some on seats, but.
You know, I was sitting there looking at that, about what Bob had mentioned about the gravel. You know, we either use our foot turf or maybe look at even concrete in those, those tears.
Something. What if you were the concrete?
There was the drainage.
Any other business?
I, I have one thing for new business. I was wondering why our notification system wasn't used when the streets were closed for the fires?
Didn't, I didn't think about it honestly.
Okay. I just thought that would have been a good example of when we could have used that and people would have known then, hey, don't go down on Clay Street. Or hey, just be aware of where you're driving in town. Didn't. Okay.
I mean, it's just one, I, I, it just doesn't happen that often.
Yeah, it doesn't, it doesn't happen that often. And I didn't think about it either, but then when on Monday, when Clay Street was closed again, I was like. Might be really helpful right now.
How many subscribers do we have for that?
Last I saw was like fifteen hundred, I want to say-ish.
Oh, wow.
Give or take.
That's a lot.
Because you don't wear your Facebook thread on the road.
You know, exactly, exactly. And Facebook doesn't come up and ding and say, hey. Everybody's talking about it.
Tommy might be surprised how many people are looking at Facebook while they're driving.
That's true.
There's nothing responsible.
It's changed. Be the pattern.
Yeah.
It was one call, I think it's something else now.
Any other business? You okay there, ma'am? Any visitors, Wester Dress Council? If not, may I have motion to go into executive session? Consider the appointment, employment, dismissal, discipline, promotion, demotion or compensation of public employee or official.
Second.
Holan?
Aye.
Hostetter?
Aye.
Schumaker?
Aye.
Con?
Aye.
Hafi?
Aye.
Von?
Aye, good evening.